Into the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God.
And.
With liberty and justice for all. With that said, before we go to the approval of the minutes, I just want to read this little note that this meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act is currently in effect under the State Emergency Service Act. The Governor's Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19 and the Governor's Executive Order of N-2920, which was issued in March 17th, 2020, that allows attendance by members of the Planning Commission, city staff and public to participate by teleconference, video conference or both. And with that said, I'm going to move our next portion of our meeting to approval of minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of February.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Uh, here.
Well, we didn't do it.
Oh, actually, I didn't do the roll call. So yeah, we'll do the roll call first.
Just do roll call.
Let's do attendance. Mr. Blakely.
Here.
Chairman Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Commissioner Kane.
Present.
Commissioner Mobley.
Here.
Vice Chair Sights.
Present.
And Commissioner Wells.
I think you're muted, Mike.
No, he's not.
I didn't hear him. Okay, well, now we can probably call the roll call vote on the approval of minutes.
Okay, roll call vote for approval of the minutes, Commissioner Blakely.
Yeah.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kane.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sights.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wells. Mike, not have volume. Mike, you don't have volume.
I'm not sure if it's acceptable for Mike to give us the thumbs up for yes or a thumbs down for no on the vote. Can we do a visual?
I think we can, because it is being videotaped. Um, well, at this time then, I'm going to open up the comments, oral comments from the public. Members of the public may be heard on any item of interest that's not on our agenda. And speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes per speaker and be advised by law, the commission is not able to deliberate or take any action on issues presented during oral comments. And at this time, Katie, you want to put up on the screen and then I'll read off what it is that they need to do.
Actually, Liz is going to share that. I'm having a little technical difficulties with my laptop.
I'll defer to you. To provide public comment during the meeting, you can call the number there at 1-669-900-9128. And you'll enter the meeting ID number of 838-9469-4166 with the passcode of 727801. And at that time, you'll press star nine on your phone. This will raise your hand and you'll be able to continue to hear the meeting on the call. But when it's time for public comment on the item that you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute your phone. You'll hear a prompt to indicate your phone is unmuted. At that time, we want you to state your name and begin your comment. You'll have three minutes to comment. Thank you, Liz, for putting that up there. Stephanie, just off the record here, how's your dad doing?
Um, we just came from his house just now and he's he's declining, but he's holding his own. Yeah, my sisters and I are rotating, uh, you know, once a week, every three weeks. So I'm going back in three weeks. But thank you for asking.
I have a question somewhat unrelated as we wait for public comment. Katie, has the city council or Liz, has the city council met in person yet?
They have not. They will be meeting in person the Monday before our Tuesday meeting.
Okay, got you. So we're right in sync with them, correct?
Yeah, yeah. This month, we are, our, our meetings are synced up where they're in the same week where normally they alternate weeks. But for yeah, for this month, we are in the same week. So we'll be on the 22nd, I believe, and they'll be on the 21st.
And those of us traveling down to the Planning Commissioners Conference in San Ramon, Mike and Mike and myself, I believe. Is there anything else we need to do with you or Liz?
Uh, I believe that I will need to get you guys a credit card authorization form. Um, I can send that to your email. And so that you can charge the room, but other than that, um, know everything. You should be all registered and ready to go.
Thanks for all your work.
Um, Katie, do we have any phone calls in or Liz? I'm not sure who is going to be capturing those.
We do not.
Um, oh, I, at this time, then I'll entertain a motion to close of the comment or actually I can close it, can't I?
Correct, yes.
So then I'll close the public comment at this time. And then we'll move on to our new business at hand. Um, with regards to public hearing to consider approval of a conditional use permit to allow a detached garage. That is, um, I'm reading here is 22 feet in height with the proposed height of 19 feet, which exceeds the zoning code standard for detached accessory buildings of 15 feet. The applicant is Travis, is it Bram? I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly. Uh, with the APN number 200-452-028. Project site is 2551 Ronerville Road. Uh, Liz, do you have anything you want to add to this at this time?
Yeah, I'll give you a brief presentation. Yeah, I apologize. The title of the agenda and the staff report both say the structure is 19 feet in height. And I see where I did pick up 22 feet somewhere in the subject line, so.
So for clarity for the minutes, is it 22 or 19?
It's 19.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Proposed at 19. So, um, yeah, the zoning code allows accessory structures, detached accessory structures at with a maximum height of 15 feet. And it states that an allowance through a use permit may be granted for up to 30 feet. So there is that allowance worked into the code. Um, so in this case, they're proposing, requesting an additional four feet. And I shall show you the proposal. So the project is located at 2551 Ronerville Road. That's north, it says northwest of Newburgh Road. So the, this is the police facility in Newburgh Park. So it's just on the north side. And it's actually, it's two parcels over, but three houses over. So adjacent to it is a single family home and a second unit and ADU. And then a single family home to the north and also to the northwest and also to the northeast. And, um, I didn't put the zoning, the zoning up, I think is in your packet. Um, the zoning around the site is either single family, it's a mix of single family, mainly to the north and multifamily to the south. And then the public facility zoning up for the police facility and the Newburgh Park. So you can see that development is, you know, similar in nature on all sides. Uh, the topography for this parcel, you know, along Ronerville Road, it's flat, but it does slope upwards. And then it gets steeper as we go north towards, um, you know, Franklin Avenue and then Rancho Bueno Vista. So it does get pretty steep. And on another air view, you can see that the house to directly to the north is, um, it's a two-story home and it's on a hill. So it's substantially higher than this site. So this is the proposed detached garage. And it's approximately 500 square feet in size. Um, and you can see that it is in a barn style. It's a metal building, but it's in a barn style with a, a Dutch, I think it's a Dutch or a gambrel roof. Um, so you know, in that regard, it, it, I, I feel that it fits in with the old, you know, the agricultural um, history of Fortuna. And you know, you still see a lot of barns on Ronerville Road. So you know, as far as the design goes, I think it, it adds to the neighborhood, you know, as opposed to a a flat metal building. So you can also see that because of that shape, that's, you know, basically why the additional height is needed. And it's just on the peaked part of the building. So to get that height or you know, to get the style, um, one does have to go a little bit higher than on a flat roof, which would be, you know, down here. And then the location of the garage, so Ronerville Road is at the bottom of the site plan here. See the existing residence, there's a curved driveway on the site and then the driveway would go back to the garage. So it's, you know, behind the, the residence, it's in, you know, it's not in front, it's not imposing on the front of the street or blocking anything. Um, so it is in, you know, a normal place for a detached structure. Um, like the development, it does meet the setbacks and the building coverage that are required in the zone. And this lot is approximately 16,000 square feet. So it's about a third of an acre. So it's larger than a normal lot. So you know, there's ample, that creates additional setbacks. Except, um, you know, this is a standard setback on the the west or the northwest. Um, but otherwise there's still plenty of room on the parcel. And this is a street view. You can see the houses to the northeast or on the hill. Um, and the garage would be back in this corner here to the left of the, you know, rear and left of the building. Um, so you can see it fits in, you know, that it's an older or a sort of architecturally older style that, you know, is kind of represents the history and the, you know, the pre-modern development in Fortuna just have a steeper pitched roof. Um, and the, and the large porch, not quite craftsman style, but you know, definitely from that period. Um, and it does have, you know, so this part of the main residence is tall as well. So it's about the same height to, you know, approximately 18 or 19 feet tall. So the garage would, you know, not be, you know, not very in height from the existing building or from what, you know, is typical for a single family residence. And then this shows the development to the, um, to the right or to the southeast. And again, that's an older style, older historical si- style. And there's, you know, plenty of distance, of course, to that residence. This is, the red house is the main residence and the yellow house is an accessory dwelling unit. So, you know, the red house, um, that's got a tall roof as well for a single story. And then to the let's see, do I have another one? No, that's it. So to the west, I thought I had a another picture of that one. Maybe I didn't pick it up. But, um, the residence to the west is a single story. It's actually, it's a single wide. It might be a double wide. So it's a flat roofed mobile home and so on the aerial, you can see that that residence is set on the other side of the lot. So just pointing that out is, uh, you know, that creates good separation where the barn isn't going to be imposed onto that house either. And then the house, you know, this is the house to the, up the hill. So it's, um, looking over the building, over this lot. And won't, won't be impacted anymore than the existing single family residence that's there. Let's see. I think that's it. Let's see if we have anything else here. No, I think, um, you know, with just the additional four feet and with the design of the, the garage and in the existing conditions, um, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the additional four feet, the height of the garage. And I'll pass that back to the planning commission.
Um, are the neighbors notified of this? Do they have a notification sent out of the structure?
Yes. So as part of the planning commission process for public hearings, um, we do send out a property notice with the description of the project and also with an image so that they know exactly what's being proposed. Uh, that's within a radius of 300 feet on all sides. And, um, we did not receive any comments from the public. Thank you.
I like it. I think it will look great.
I happened to personally talk with one of the neighboring property owners and they were in favor of it also, and they did receive their notice.
Nice.
Oh, there it is. Is this an image that I was looking for of a neighboring house?
Liz, that's what I just pulled up on, uh, Google Maps.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, that's good.
So I have a question. There's no, um, the dimensions for the height of the, the dimensions for the width are, are not. Um, and looking at that and going back over, been driving by there pretty much on a daily basis, look over at that. Um, there's already a structure in the backyard that will be removed, obviously, to make way for that. How, you know, you said it, it meets the guidelines for setbacks. But there's no there's no measurements here to show that.
Um, I believe it's
I'm missing somewhere.
No, it's, I believe it's 20 by 25. Sorry about that. It is 500 square feet.
Are they going to put a power or gas? I know it's gas meter right alongside that house, right there where they'll be driving in and out. Um, anything like that going into this thing?
They may be, and, um, the applicant is, um, attending on Zoom. Um, they will go through the building permit process. So, you know, even for a detached, um, structure like that, a building permit is required. So, you know, that would be shown on the plans, but, um, yeah, we can ask the applicant when, if and when he been when you opened up the public hearing, public comment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to open up public comment?
Yes, I was just waiting for you. I was waiting for you. Anything you say before I open up for public comment? If not, at this time, I went to open it up for public comment and, um, I'm going to assume Liz, you're going to pop that up there again.
Yeah, thank you.
Please and thank you. And for the public, it's going to be calling the number 1-669-900-9128. And you'll type in the meeting ID number of 838-9469-4166. You then hit the passcode 727801. At that time, you'll press star nine and then you have a hand raised. And I believe it's going to be Katie will acknowledge you and let you know when you'll hear a prompt in your ear to be able to speak to us. You'll be limited to three minutes and only to the topic at hand.
Kevin, are we good to ask questions too now? As commissioners?
Sure.
It should, uh, Chris had, kind of had that question hanging out there for the property owner, right, Chris?
Well, we'll, we'll let the property owner address this after we open the public.
Okay.
Minutes post.
Okay.
Give it another minute, Katie, and if we don't have anything, I'll close, close it. It's been what, maybe two minutes?
Maybe if the property owner's on, he can kick on right now and during public comment, we can ask him the question.
Well, Travis is there. I'm going to close public comment here in a minute. Um, in fact, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to close public comment at this time and then we'll bring it back to the, um, to the commissioners. And, uh, Travis, uh, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Sure. Would you be willing to address the, the, the answer to the question on hand?
Yeah, there will be lights and outlets inside the garage, but I'm a licensed contractor. There will be building permit issued. All the inspections will be performed. Everything will be safe and up to code.
Hey Travis, will it be the same color scheme? Obviously the little drop from the company, it's like red, but is it going to be gray? Or is it going to be painted to be the same color as the house or something?
It's going to be a barn red with, uh, one moment. What color was the trim? With a green trim.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
So it'll look like a barn.
Okay.
Pretty traditional barn style.
Okay. Were your questions answered, Chris?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there any other questions of Travis while we have them or did, uh, did we lose them already?
He's there.
I'm sorry, I don't see him on my screen anymore. There he is.
Right here.
He moves around us when people talk.
The joys of Zoom.
Yeah, that's right. If not, then I'm going to call the meeting back to us and, uh, I guess I'll look for any motions that people might want to make.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to adopt resolution number P-2022-3081, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving a use permit for an accessory structure 22 feet in height.
Actually, I think that's 18 feet, is it, Liz?
I will change that to 19 feet if that's acceptable.
Is, is that correct, Liz? You're muted.
Yeah, it's 19.
Okay.
So noted and moved.
I would like to second that for 19 feet.
All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kane.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sights.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wells.
Acknowledge a thumbs up for Mr. Wells.
All right.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your, your good nature on this.
Yeah.
Um.
Oh, I won't, if I can, I will note that the resolution itself, by adopting that resolution, um, it does indicate that it's 19 feet in the resolution.
Great. Thank you, Liz. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Well, we'll move on to our second topic at hand, which is a project from the Fortuna Fire District application consisting of a new illuminated LED sign. Our petitioner or applicant is the Fire Protection District with the APA, uh, APN or accessories parcel number of 201, that's 061-026. Project address is 140 South Fortuna Boulevard. And as regarding the commercial thoroughfare for a sign, uh, six foot by four foot. Liz, do you have some staff notes you'd like to share with us?
Yes, planning commissioners. Um, so this is similar in nature to the LED sign that you considered about a month ago for Ace Hardware, um, similar type of style. Um, in this case, the, the pre-standing sign, Ace Hardware had the other, you know, their business sign attached to it as well. This is just the sign itself. Um, the sign area is, uh, six feet by four feet, so 24 square feet for the sign area. And then with the frame and the posts, um, the overall height is seven feet, six inches, and the width is six feet, eight inches. I'm going to go ahead and share a screen. So this is the sign itself. So it's just your, you know, basic wood, I think it's a wood frame, um, with the LED sign set in. And then, um, to move on to the location, Fortuna Boulevard is at the bottom. And then the driveway or the little private road that gives access to their other driveway and to their training facility in the rear, that's on the right of the, of the site plan. And then the sign will be located in that, um, northeast corner of the facility. So within the landscaping strip. And you can see that location on the next slide here. So it would just be um, in this, uh, corner to the right within the lawn area. And then the sign, let's see. So that's really all I have on the image itself. You know, it's just the basic sign. Um, the sign area, the zoning code does have a sign allowance under the Fortuna Municipal Code. And the allow, the sign allowance is, um, based on the street frontage. So in this case, there's 185 feet of street frontage. So the code says that they're allowed 185 square feet of sign. And this is just 24 square feet. And then they have, um, a small amount, you know, that's probably, you know, 50 square feet on the building itself set way back. So it's, it's well within the allowable sign area. Um, it is a, an LED sign that allows moving font. And again, like the Ace Hardware sign that we discussed, the zoning code does prohibit signs that flash, revolve, move or, uh, made, um, or be animated in any way. So how we apply that is that, um, the sign is limited to, this changing of the sign is limited to once per hour. Um, and that is in a condition of approval. The fire department may, um, want to have it moving. And we discussed some options for that. One of them, um, the code does allow conditional use permits to be approved by the planning commission for, um, waivers of the sign standards. And that's something that, the, um, the fire district could pursue in the future. It's not a part of this proposal. Uh, and then also if it's determined that the California government code, um, does exempt some government agencies from local zoning codes. So it's, that's not something that we had time to investigate, but that is something that would, um, allow that sign to be moving. So I'm not sure of, um, you know, how, how that will play out, but I just wanted to, um, bring that up, that those would be some possible things in the future. But for the approval tonight, it would be, um, limited to the changing of the sign, you know, once per hour. So, you know, it's pretty straightforward, uh, otherwise. And, um, that's really all the information I have. And if you want to, um, yeah, open it up to questions, I'll be happy to answer anything that you might have. Thank you.
No, we'll bring it back then to the commissioners. Anybody have any questions of Liz?
Well, so Liz has just said that we, there's the possibility that we approve this. And then there's some loophole we don't know about within state law, correct? That could
Right.
Could, um, that we, we don't have all the information tonight, correct?
Well, that's something that would be out of our hands regardless, you know, whether we had that information beforehand or after. Um, but California code has different exemptions for, um, different types of government agencies or what they call quasi-government agencies, like Caltrans has its own exemption, probably in the Streets and Highways Code, uh, which allows them to, you know, basically have a be exempt from like local land use regulations, same with school districts. So the school, any, any, um, you know, any activity, any building or other activity that would fall under the local code, uh, is not subject to local jurisdiction. They don't have to get building permits for any construction there, um, reviewed and approved under the state architectural office. So that's why the Fortuna High School has a LED sign and the Veterans Building. So the county is exempt as well. And the county owns the Veterans Building. So, um, they have a moving LED sign. So when, um, this was brought up, So when this was brought up. Recently, you know, there wasn't time. It's it's a part of the government code. It's. Based on, you know, what I've had to research in the past. It does take a little bit of research to find, is there a code, you know, that exempts a local agency? And then when they, when, you know, in reading the code, it's not always clear what's exempt and what isn't. So. That issue is is basically deferred. I mean, it can be discussed, but it's really not part of the approval. I don't think it's part of the consideration. So, you know, something that if they aren't exempt, then they would follow the local code. If they are exempt, then. You know, they might consider letting it flash or it would be allowed to let it flash. And then, you know, you might. The fire chief, Lon Winburn, I'm sorry, the fire chief Russ Brown and Lon Winburn are here tonight. So they might have some additional information or. Input or comments.
I have a question. Did the fire department have to pay money to get it this far to apply for our? Building permit?
Now, the zoning code does have. Waves the fee for nonprofits, so. Any non-business entity is exempt from the zoning fees.
Is that government nonprofits or does that include like churches?
Leave it lists several types of nonprofits, including government and churches and others.
Is there other questions from the commissioners? If not, I'm gonna open this up to public comment and then we'll bring it back. I hear anything. At this time, I'm gonna open it up to public comment and Liz, if you'd flash the sign up there again for me and appreciate it. Doesn't seem to want to work, huh? Yeah, there we go. At this time, the public can call the following number, one six six nine nine zero zero. Nine one two eight. You'll then type in the meeting ID number of eight three eight. Nine four six nine four one six six. Upon which you'd be asked for a passcode and that passcode will be seven two seven eight zero one. After that, you'll hit star nine where your hand will be raised indicating to Katie. Schmidt that there's somebody on the phone and she will let you know when you're able to speak with a little beep in your ear. It'd be limited to three minutes and it would only be on the topic at hand. Nope, that wasn't for lawn. Have we seen any activity there, Katie?
No.
I don't think I'm gonna wait as long as I really don't see that there's been anybody getting online with us today. So I'm gonna close the public comment. And I I do have a question myself to either Russ or Mon. I'm not sure which one wants to answer it. But I personally don't have an issue with regards to the sign changing. Because I could see that as a creative asset to the community when it comes to any kind of notices that. We should be made aware of. And so my question to Lon and Russ, either one. You see that as being one of the purposes for the signage?
I'll I'll take the first part of it and Lon can jump in if he wants to. Yeah, definitely. Some of the, some of our ideas are. Using it as a recruitment tool, you know, to run our recruitment messages from time to time. To get some fire safety messages out there, because with today's climate and the change. Fire diversions that we see, it's a good place to give our community our information that we want them to hear. Place for us to notify people of our CPR and first aid classes. Any department announcements that we might want to make with our training tower that you guys approved. There's gonna be a need to inform the public of what's going on there so that PD doesn't get a hundred phone calls wondering why there's smoke coming from the building. Burn day status, you know, we get calls all the time for burn day status, so some of it too helps us to alleviate some. Requirement on our staff in the office just to, you know, answer phone calls about things is as common as burn day status. So that's kind of some of the ideas that we're hoping to do. Having it not rotate or having it not. Not change on an hour doesn't really work for us, so we're we'll definitely be looking at either a conditional use. Permit processor or through an exemption because changing it every hour probably isn't a go for us. So I'll be quiet at that and let Lon chime in.
I think I think Russ pretty much nailed it on that, nailed everything that I that I had made notes on. I would agree with with his thoughts on that. You know, I think part of our issue is getting a bang for the buck. If we're gonna invest the kind of money that it's gonna cost to put this thing out there that it needs to be. It needs to be, you know, something that we can use for the community and that is the intent. So. So yes, a conditional use permit or an exemption, as Liz kind of led on to, we didn't have time to, you know, we spent about. Pretty much about this just recently, so. Didn't know about the issue with. With the municipal code, so we're willing to look into that. You know, but like Liz said, if it is exemption to the government code, then approval doesn't matter one way or the other, so. We are certainly willing to put together a usage and operations plan, which will tell you what we're gonna use it for, which Russ laid out very well. As well as how we intend to operate it, because to be honest, we haven't given that whole lot of thought. As to, you know, will we run this for a half an hour, then we're gonna change it to something else or, and that's gonna probably be dictated by circumstance to a great degree, but. We certainly can do that. So I guess that's where I would leave it. You know, I think the resolution as it stands right now doesn't, you know, like Russ said, that just doesn't really. Work for for the direction we want to go.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anybody have any questions for Ron or?
I have a.
On, I mean, Russ or Lon. Sorry, Russ.
I have a question. We, the city won't allow a business to do a flashing sign. And some of the thoughts behind that last meeting were because it does present a hazard to traffic. Is that correct?
We talked about potential traffic hazard and also aesthetics for some people. Not everybody thinks it's, you know, not. Good aesthetically. The code doesn't explain why that standard is in there. It's just in there, so. You know, I think those are the two biggest. Things that I hear about. It's just some people object visually how it looks and then others feel it's a traffic hazard.
I'm I'm supportive of the overall initiative, but last meeting, of course. You know, we can't do this for Ace Hardware and it's this sign is gonna be just feet away from Ace Hardware. But we're gonna do this possibly for our fire department, which is terrific. But if a car could get in an accident for Ace Hardware, why couldn't that car get in the same accident for the fire department? A few feet down the road is my question. Any thoughts?
My thinking is not to do with the accident, but to do with the building itself as far as. You know, a firehouse, that's to me different than a business. I don't know why. A vet's hall, that's different. A school, that's different. To me, those are seem to be exceptions where if every business in Fortuna had a flashing sign. That would make a big difference, I feel, with aesthetics and possibly. Automobile problems, but. I think the firehouse is is a perfect place for the sign to be. That's my thought.
I agree.
I don't, I don't think any of us want to see Fortuna lit up with flashing signs all over the place. And I, and I think we ought to be diligent to make sure that that doesn't happen. But in certain situations where with government agencies or government property, you know, our hands are tied. Unfortunately. So, you know, that's kind of, that's kind of out of our hands, really.
You know, I see with. From the fires from the last year from over and reading and all that kind of good stuff. I'm sure those signs were. A lot of help over over there. A lot of information was going out. And I bet you a lot of information was going out on those signs that were over there. I'm sure. We've been lucky here that we haven't had to put up with that, but. I'm sure these guys are gonna take care of that as soon as that happens, so I'm all favor of it.
Yes.
I have a question for either staff or Lon and Russ. What's the speed limit out there in front of the fire hall on the Boulevard?
It's thirty-five.
I believe that's right.
If I can throw something else in there too, that that does help us in our location, the area in front of West Scott Way is blocked. Is is marked to stay clear, so there's always a clear path. Looking at that sign, so it's not, I think that that's helpful, not hurtful, the fact that we have that that buffer in that space. And the fact that we are closer to a stop sign where most of the traffic is going at a slower rate of speed even than thirty-five through there. Does benefit us a little bit.
And I just throw one interjection. I was thinking about this and you you bring something up for me, Russ. Russ, at that stop sign there where you're, if you're driving going east. I believe you can cross over. The median has an opening there because you guys use that to either go left or right. And if there's a car coming out of there with that sign being as low as it is to the ground, is there gonna be an obstruction if you're looking to your right? As you cross the traffic is coming from your left, you gotta cross over to the median. Is that gonna impair vision for traffic coming from going? Be northbound. On Fortuna Boulevard there.
I don't, I don't see how that's a problem and we we allow parking along between, say, Hummels and the fire department. And that that blocks a lot more vision than our sign would be. Our sign, I don't think, would block anybody's vision from their.
I just didn't know the clearance from the bottom of the sign down because a car sits lower than when your trucks.
Sure.
So that's what I was asking for.
Well, I think that how far off that sign is away from the Boulevard. It shouldn't be a problem. I think like Russ said, cars are parked are a bigger problem.
Yeah, I would add to that. The sign is set back from the corner. By about at least. Like, close to thirty feet. The code does require not thirty-foot triangle to be kept clear. And it's not dimensioned here, but it's set back, it looks about thirty feet and the sign does require a. Building permit. So that's where the dimensions, you know, would are critical and. You know, that's the final final review, so that that dimension would be on a building permit. So it will be clear and it it looks like they do have that clearance now on the site plan, so that's a good point.
Any other questions for staff or for Lon and Russ?
But I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to adopt resolution P two zero two two dash three zero eight two, a resolution of the planning commission. The city of Fortuna approving design review of a new illuminated LED sign for Fortuna Fire Protection District.
I'll second that.
Right, roll call vote Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kine.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sights.
Abstain.
And Commissioner Wells.
Did we lose him?
I think we lost him.
Commissioner Mobley says both yes to.
Oh, did I skip you? I'm sorry, Commissioner Mobley.
Yes. But I made the motion, so it kind of fit.
Yeah.
I'm glad this is the last Zoom meeting.
Well, thank you. I believe the motion passed. I want to thank Lon and Russ for being here tonight. We appreciate you guys and everything you do in the service you bring to the community as well.
Agreed. Yeah, thanks for having us. If I can just throw out a couple of quick things. One is the address. Was one forty South Fortuna Boulevard is actually three twenty, South Fortuna Boulevard. The other thing is just to clarify that 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 resolution. Would be corrected to state or to item number three says that it must be stationary pursuant to FMC seventeen oh five, whatever. That that'll that that'll go away or be changed or.
Well, I think stationary means the sign movement, not necessarily the projection. Am I right, Liz?
Yeah, I think he's talking about if if there is an exemption in the future.
Make a new motion to do that because.
Yeah, that's that's something completely different than what we're talking about today.
Yeah, I think if there is an automatic exemption, then that would supersede the condition. And then if you, if a use permit were pursued, then that could also be addressed. It could.
Kind of like what we call an overlay.
Yeah.
I understand that. I think I'm confused as to that the commission just approved use of the sign in the way that we propose to use it. Which is not have it not change every hour. And. Primarily that would be it, but. So I just would like to confirm that because the resolution doesn't state that, I don't think.
What we approved was the motion to be following the guidelines as established by the city of Fortuna at this time. And Liz, what is that standard? Do you know off the top of your head?
I guess, Lon, so it says that the image must be stationary. And may not be changed more than once per hour. So I could see, so are you saying that it by stationary or?
Our request is that it is not stationary and or does not, that we can change it more than once per hour.
Oh.
That was the intent of the discussion. Yes.
Well, can I, just to do a pause here, when we define, let's define, what's the word stationary mean? Does it mean if the sign is fixed stationary or does it mean something else?
Well, then in parentheses, it says not flashing or moving, so it's really the font.
Okay.
Flowing through.
And number three, just to be clear, number three says the LED sign image must be stationary, not flashing or moving. Pursuing to so and so, but can't the fire department, Liz, put through? For our next meeting, a request to get a waiver on this?
Right, so Lon, this is a design review. And to get a waiver from the code to allow a flashing sign would require a conditional use permit. Then this meeting wasn't, so that's a separate type of permit and would need public notice.
If I may, I'd like to make a point of clarity. I believe what they're saying is flashing is like something just bombarding you like a flashing light. Or a scrolling comment. That's what that's really meaning, I'm pretty sure with regards to moving or.
Yes.
Flashing. Whereas if you're changing it every thirty minutes, that's a completely different anomaly in itself. You're focusing strictly on just changing the font like, like you're flipping the page of a book. You're not scrolling, you're not flashing it.
We do, we do understand that. You know, obviously, but the, but it it. Item number three states that and it states will not be changed more than once per hour. And again, that that's kind of the the reason for our comments tonight was that. We didn't feel that was suitable for us, so and I understand that we would move forward with a conditional use permit and that's fine. And or a code exemption will just need time to, you know.
Well, Liz, didn't you say it could fall under design review?
No, the moving part would is not part of design review. It's included as a condition of approval. As a means of just identifying that that's how the code is applied. So it's really, it's already an existing rule. It just is confirmed and clarified. You know, just for awareness purposes, that's why it's added as a condition. It's technically not a. A new condition. It's a, you know, it's a rule that already applies. It's just here for clarification purposes.
So if I understand correctly, for Lon's sake and for this commission. If we're gonna, if Lon wants to do this every thirty minutes versus every sixty. He would need to come to you and and apply for the exemption and come before us at another meeting. Am I correct? Or that'd be something that would be under the state statute, in which case it's moot point.
That that's not something we can address in this meeting.
I know that. I'm saying that I said the next meeting. They'd have to come before Liz and and apply for it and then come to us in another meeting. But again, I'm not sure if it matters because it would be a state statute that would override us anyways because they're a nonprofit.
Exactly. So if you go look up the state statute tomorrow, you can find out that you you don't need that the rest of this.
Right.
Right.
You could, you'll be able to do whatever you want to do.
So if I may make a suggestion, Lon. If it's not too much trouble for you, Liz, maybe the two of you talk and find out about that statute, in which case.
Right.
Lon, that'll put your mind at rest. Okay?
Right, and then and then to change the. You know, say this does prevail and we have this application or this. And we have this application or this condition that says once per hour. So to change that to more frequent, you know. Changing of the sign would take a use permit. Yes.
And I like to.
Go ahead.
I like Lon's idea. If you, if I understood you correctly, Lon, that you said you would put together a idea of like, if you guys want to change it once a minute or every five minutes or every 30 seconds. I mean, if we're upfront, when it, if, if it has to go through the, this committee again, can you guys tell us a worst case scenario?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the intent, an operation and use plan. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that would be part of, we would submit that with a conditional use permit.
But in the context of, because we just talked about LED signs at our last meeting. And because it, the guidelines for businesses are a certain way with the city. The fact that the sign was approved tonight is basically, I mean, we don't want to count our chickens before they hatch. But everybody's in support of the sign, which we all understand. If I'm understanding our group communication correctly, means that the motion, we're up for the motion as well in the future. Because we already talked about it because ACE, for instance, is prohibited from doing that.
Right.
Kevin, do you think that's a good interpretation of our group communication?
You pretty much summarized it, yes. We appreciate again you guys being here tonight. And is there any other questions of Lon or Russ? We've kind of opened up another can of worms, so to speak.
Thanks for the witness.
I will throw out there a little bit that the new sign design is different than maybe when these municipal codes were written. Because now they do turn like a page and so they're not, they're not the scrolling, they're not the flashing, they're not, they're, they are literally like turning a page. So, you know, maybe it's time that we look at that for, for other people besides just the fire department as well.
Great. If not. Lon, just a sidebar note, would you call my office sometime? If you remember, you talked to Tony about something before.
Yes, yes.
I don't like to do personal business here, but just give us a call.
You got it. Thank you.
So with that said, is there, I guess, we can table this topic. Is there anything from staff tonight that we need to be brought up apprised on?
We do have, hopefully, finally, the subcommittee meeting coming up. We had decided, decided to schedule it for, I believe, the 29th.
Yes, since our first meeting, right?
Yeah, since folks will be heading out of town for the conference next week. And then we have our regular meeting the week after that. So we will get to meet in person. So I'll be sending out another invite and we can all meet here. Or we can do hybrid if folks, I know some folks aren't in town or will be, you know, working. So we can do either a hybrid or in person. I can send out an email and see what works for folks.
Yeah, and then just so everybody knows, next meeting, I will be out of town. Mark will be leading our meeting. So I've already talked with Mark about that and Liz and Katie. So I just hope everybody's attendance enough so we have a quorum for the next meeting as well. If not, I guess there's nothing else on the agenda. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We all second it.
Yes.
I think we need a vote, don't we?
Roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
He just left.
That's a yes then.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kine.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sights.
Yes, thank you.
We also lost Commissioner.
At least we had a quorum enough to vote on that adjournment.
Yeah, we'd be here all night.